Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call, please?
Alderman Keenan. Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Benner. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Collier. Alderman Kalkamer and Spencer have been excused.
The first item on the agenda is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If you'd like to make a comment, you could step up to the microphone and state your name and address and your comment. You have five minutes to make those comments or thereabouts.
Tim Jacobson, City of Manassas. Not public works. 732 Perris Street. Before I start my clock, I watched, you know, I was informed about the last Personnel Committee meeting, and I watched it, and I'd like to thank the council for all the consideration and kind comments that were made. And I do understand completely the reluctance to get citizens involved in some of those decision-making processes. The one thing that I was surprised about a little bit is there is no mention of the Deputy Director, Adam Alex. And that man is, well, after Mark is gone, he's the last of the Mohicans of when we changed our operating procedures with the Department of Public Works back in 92, I think it was. And we do operate a lot differently than other municipalities. I think Peggy will attest to that when she came in here and found out how that financing was intertwined with all the services. But I just want to take that moment to say thank you, and I appreciate it. Now, the reason that I came here today, tonight, been following the town and village process going on, the Fox Crossing, and this newspaper article I saved, April 1st, just tells me, April fools, because the West Side is going to determine what the East Side is going to do. And to me, like the headline says, it's a pivotal moment for sure. The West Side is going to determine the fate of the East Side. And it tells me that the East Side are the sheep, and the West Side is the shepherd. And in my career, which is 37 years, I've witnessed all the back and forth between Ardentues and Joelows, and got to shake my head sometimes, and Randy Gallo and I would always be on the phone, geez, if they tell you to stop helping us, let me know so I don't forget to plow streets that you're getting for me, and back and forth. So, out in the field, we did help each other when it was practical, and mainly because we worried more about the people than we did the boundaries. Somebody would get hurt if one of us wasn't there, and we didn't care if it was a town resident or a city resident. We worried about injury and possible death. That was our concern. Anyway, now, the question is still the same, why wouldn't the East Side join the City of Manassas? And it always comes down to the town residents being told that the city's going to make them put in curb and gutter and sidewalks, and it's going to cost them a lot of money. And two, that their taxes are going to skyrocket. And to me, those are nothing but old-school draconian scare tactics. For one, they're going, those people in the East Side are going to elect their neighbors and friends to represent them as you do, as Aldermen, on a daily basis. And if somebody doesn't want curb and gutter or sidewalk out on that Old East Side, they're going to be represented here, and they're going to be able to come to the council chambers and convince you not to put it in, as we had residents and neighborhoods do before. The second thing is the scare tactic of their taxes is going to skyrocket. To me, one, their school taxes are going to be the same, whether in the town or the city. There's Manassas School District residents. Their Fox Valley taxes are going to be the same. Their sewer and water is going to be the same, they're in District 4, as some of our residents in the city are. So that's not going to change. What possibly has, what will change is our county taxes will go down, because that's covered in the city. Some of those things are covered by the city. And three, or four, their electrical rates. I mean, I think our municipal utilities and WPPI would aggressively pursue those lines as we did when we moved out east, and be able to provide those new city residents with 15% or 20% less cost to our electricity, and that adds up to over $200 a year on that. So the last article, the reporter tried to explain the differences between the communities pertaining to their fees and taxes, fees and taxes. And I know that they paid, there was mention in the article that the town residents pay $165 a year for their refuse and recycling. And I know when I was on board, we were always lower than the town, and the last study that Adam Alex did, I think it was last year, the City of Manassas residents paid $125 for their recycling and refuse collection. So there's a lot of examples that can be debated between fees and taxes. Some cities, communities just use both pockets, both our pockets instead of one. But the politicians out there can run on the fact that they didn't raise taxes. Now, your fees are going to go up, but they didn't raise your taxes. And that's, that's just, to me, that's just draconian. And the other, the one thing that's really common, just remember that not too long ago, families from the town and the city sat together at Calder Stadium and brought home a state football championship. And today, they still come together for concerts and athletic events and everything, with that school being the nucleus, only to go home to their own side of the border. There's no longer a need for the same people to be separated by political borders. Their heritage, they're afraid some of, they're going to scare them that you're going to lose their heritage, and they won't. The City of Manassas has the island, it has the woods, it has the prairie, and it'll always have the Old East Side. Like I said, the people will elect their neighbors and friends as Aldermen representing them on a daily basis, not their annual town meeting, not waiting to see what their fate is by somebody on the West Side that has absolutely no connection to the Blue Jays. And someday, someday, a person from the Old East Side is going to be elected the Mayor of Manassas. We won't throw you out yet. And I, the one thing is, I know Barb Hanson, I know her family, and I'm sure she means well for herself, but she come across in that article to me as a bleeding deacon. And not everybody she talked to wants to be separate from the City of Manassas. I have a friend that she was in his driveway, and he told her flat out, there's no way I want to be a Village, I'll go to the city first. So she's not telling you the whole story. So, the West Side, and she said that she's worried about annexation. Okay, I got this much left. The West Side's not afraid of securing their boundaries for keeping anybody from annexing into the town. The West Side needs to incorporate to expand their boundaries on the West Side, and the East Side is going to pay for those annexations and infrastructure costs. The people on the East Side probably generate several hundred thousand dollars in federal and state road aid that will be used to expand the West Side, and the East Side will face special assessments. By joining the City of Manassas, that money stays on the East Side of Little Lake Butte tomorrow. So in conclusion, the question remains, why wouldn't the East Side join the City of Manassas? Somebody needs to start talking to them, I think. Somebody needs to start inviting them in, have a coffee, have a donut, talk about how we can make the community one, and really do grander things than state football championships up here at this council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Go ahead.
I'm Representative Amanda Stuck, and I just briefly want to offer support for Resolution 18 on the agenda tonight. Of course, I support any attempt to support the workers here in Manassas and help increase chances that we can keep jobs here. But I'd like to say beyond that, of course, I do not think the city is alone in trying to increase economic development, keep jobs here. It really should be the state as a partner in doing that. So I would just like to offer that, you know, I, of course, will continue to do what I can at the state level to work with the governor and my colleagues across both aisles to increase our economic development here, increase the policy we're putting forward in terms of what will actually retain and grow jobs here in Wisconsin, but that, of course, my door is always open, so if you ever have questions, concerns, or comments in that regard, please feel free to contact me at any time. Thank you.
Mark Westfall, 945 Hunt Avenue. I am also President of the Fox Valley Area Labor Council, AFL-CIO, and a nine-year employee of Graphic Packaging International, working at the Washington Street Plant. I come before the council meeting tonight in support of Resolution 1816. Unfortunately, the situation at Graphic Packaging is nothing new or unique. In fact, over the last 25 to 30 years, it has become quite common for corporations to discard older manufacturing plants, especially unionized ones, and move productions to other sites they deem more appropriate. By closing down these older facilities, they are abandoning dedicated, faithful, long-term employees while at the same time leaving local communities at an economic disadvantage. On May 16th, Graphic Packaging International abruptly announced that they were closing the Washington Street Plant. Their plans include laying off all of the current workers in stages with the shutdown to be completed by December 1st of this year. At this point, they believe they will scrap most of the existing plant equipment, eliminating the chance for any competition from other business rivals. This action only serves the needs of Graphic Packaging International and is a prime example of the corporate greed and selfishness that we hear of in today's society. The Washington Street Plant, to this day, is still operating in the black. There is no reason to doubt that another owner could come in and continue to be profitable at this site. The reality is that with our experienced and highly skilled workforce, even running older equipment, Graphic Packaging is concerned that they would lose customers and business to the Washington Street Plant. The resolution before the council tonight places no penalties, restrictions, or sanctions on Graphic Packaging International. It simply calls on them to be a responsible employer and a good corporate citizen by asking them to attempt to sell the Washington Street facility as is. There may or may not be a buyer for the Washington Street facility, but we will never know that if Graphic Packaging refuses to even consider that possibility. Tonight, I urge all of the council members to support and pass Resolution 1816 in an effort to provide a ray of hope to the 225 employees of Graphic Packaging International and to the City of Manassas taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Westfall.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for hearing me. I'd like to speak on the recommendation, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Mark Riker, 504 East Forest Avenue, Nina, Wisconsin. I'd like to speak on the recommendation of the denial of my bartending license. I'd like to just state a couple of facts. There is a felony charge on my record. It's from 25 years ago.
Mark, can I interrupt you for just a second? We normally would allow you to speak at that point in the meeting, and then we might have a couple of questions for you as well, so.
So wait then?
Yep, if I could just ask you to wait till we get to that point. Otherwise, we might have to do it twice, so.
Sir.
Thank you for coming, though, tonight. Sir?
Rick Rissom, 627 Jackson Street, Nina. I am President of the GCC Graphic Communications Union. I represent the printing pressmen over at the Graphic Packaging Plant. I'm standing in support of the resolution. These are a lot of good working people over there. These are good-paying jobs. We hate to see another plant in the City of Manassas go empty and sit there vacant. There's no reason why Graphic Packaging cannot attempt to sell that building and keep it running. These are people that have families, have grown up in this city and their surrounding Fox Valley area, and it's a shame that what Graphic Packaging is doing to them over there and by closing this plant. So I'm just standing in support, and I hope the committee will vote to accept that resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Sandra DeVill-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. First, I just want to concur with the people that spoke before me, Tim Jacobson regarding the Village of Fox Crossing, and those here representing the resolution regarding Graphic Packaging. What I wanted to mention tonight was, I usually try to come here and present state statute, city code, things to back up what I'm saying, that it's just not my personal opinion, in the hopes that you as a council and administration will actually take to heart what I'm saying. The majority of the time, I think, it's ignored. But here I am again. First of all, you just had a workshop on the Fox Locks that actually had been not posted correctly. It just said workshop. It had no mention of the Fox Locks. I'm sure a lot of the people in the public would have liked to attend. It wasn't until this morning and after I notified both the Mayor and Rebecca Nichols that an agenda was placed on the website. So I thank you for, at the last minute, doing that, and I do have to thank Rebecca Nichols for posting it on her personal website and my Manassas, or I would have never known about Secondly, this is the third meeting I have now attended to remind you that the RDA has yet to schedule their orientation meeting, and again, per city code, they were supposed to meet May 1st. That hasn't happened. Now, on to tonight's agenda. Under Communications FK, there's a park and rec memo. Just to let you know, there's a big difference between a water treatment plant and a wastewater treatment plant, and you might want to clarify that. Under the Consent Agenda, Item G3, there's discussion regarding the park and rec and the dive team fee. I just want to go on record to say that I recall when, the dive team's a great program, don't get me wrong, but I do remember it being sold as it was going to be donations and volunteer, and it has now been grown into something that's in our budget. There was over budget last year due to overtime, and now we're looking at charging fees to the boating public to supplement this dive team, and we kind of see this a lot at times. We're thinking, it was kind of the same thing with the K-9 unit. Things kind of start out like it's not going to cost anything, and it morphs. So I just wanted to mention that. The two items I'm basically here for tonight is the Plan Commission recommendation for 222 Washington Street for a special use permit. I spoke about it last time, that I'm opposed to the special use permit to transform this former professional doctor's office into an indoor facility storage shed that would now create another storage facility on our southern gateway. We have it on our eastern gateway, we have it on our northern gateway, and it's pretty much, when you enter Manassas, plan unseen storage facilities. And as you know, like on Plank Road, Valley Road, you don't see redevelopment occurring. You don't see people, you know, coming to this area to build new projects, and I think a lot of it is because these storage facilities, they don't create jobs, they don't increase property values, they're, they don't do anything to supplement the tax base in the City of Manassas. And I do think that we have a comprehensive plan that has this area as community commercial, and we should be abiding by a comprehensive plan, and if not, we shouldn't have it. So I strongly urge you not to give the special use permit, because in all essence, it's going to morph into something. It lies with the land, so someone else could purchase that, run it, and the next thing you know, they're storing boats, they're storing campers, things outside, and who's going, it's complaint basis. Who's going to complain about it? No one lives over there. We see that across the street from me, they have no special use permit. I have a salvage yard, I have an auto body shop I've been dealing with for years, and that's where my frustration comes in, because it depreciates value, it's a nuisance to the neighborhood. And my last item is the liquor license renewals for both Five O'Clock Somewhere and the Old Grog. I know you're going to pass them. I'm just blowing wind up here, but they are a public nuisance. Saturday night at 12:30, there were six people out on the sidewalk in front of Old Grog, and probably double that in front of Five O'Clock Somewhere. Social conversation. The attorney says there's nothing I can do about it, but I bet if she had 12 people sitting outside of her front door for hours, she would be concerned. These are depreciating property values, and that whole corridor from DeBruin Auto Body through the bars is nothing but a public nuisance. The two-hour parking is not enforced on Broad Street on the South Side. People are flying down Broad Street over the speed limit. They're going the wrong way down Broad Street. DeBruin's girlfriend or wife was passed out on the sidewalk Saturday, and people taking a walk with their dog had to actually walk over her because they couldn't get around the car up on Jax or the van with no engine in it. It's ridiculous, and that's where my frustration is coming from. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this point? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of Department Head Staff Consultants. We have the minutes to receive and the communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive and put on file Minutes A through I and Communications J through Q.
Is a motion a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Item J, I appreciate Director Radke getting back to us on the Broad Street placement of the dumpsters. Director Radke, is there going to be footings put in, or we're going to have to excavate the parking lot, or are we going to drill, drill down? How is that structures going to be built?
Depends on what our final decision is as to materials, but we, as far as what we hope to be able to put in for the corners of each enclosure, we're still hopeful of putting in some type of masonry columns there, and those would be with footings going down. They'd probably be augured down after we cut through the pavement and constructed similar to like a signal base for the foundation for those. Beyond that, we're still exploring the costs of other materials, still actually looking at a possible masonry walls, in which case we would not have the corner columns, but just trying to price those out with the thought that Public Works crews would be doing most of the work in order to save some expenses and work within the budgeted amount for these enclosures.
The company that made the parking wrap there in Valders, Wisconsin, Span Creek, do they make any structures like this?
I'm not aware of that they do.
Okay. Maybe that's something we could look into and it may match, may match the structure. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The Consent Agenda this evening, there are five items, the minutes to approve from the Common Council on May 16th, the Administration Committee recommendations from 516, to accept the bid of the Post Crescent Media as the official city newspaper from May 2016 through 17, the Park and Recreation Board recommendation from May 10th, stating, starting in 2017, to raise the daily boat launch fee from $5 to $6, with a portion of this increase to be placed in the NINA-Manassas Fire Rescue Budget in a manner to be determined by the Mayor and appropriate staff to partially offset water rescue costs. The Plan Commission recommendation from May 17th, to approve the special use permit for 222 Washington Street with the following conditions, that the lighting plan is to be submitted to include cut sheets on fixtures along with photometrics, that verification of ingress egress easements, and that prior to Common Council meeting, elevations of the project are to be submitted with staff approval of the proposed materials. And the NINA-Manassas Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendation from May 24th for the creation of the Water Rescue Trust Fund administered by the City of NINA on behalf of NINA-Manassas Fire Rescue, with funds received from the increased boat launch fees approved by the Park and Rec Commissions of both cities, as well as other donations designated for water rescue services that shall be deposited into this trust account. Oversight of the Water Rescue Trust Fund shall be assigned to the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. Does anyone wish to have any items separated this evening? Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I would like three, four, and five removed.
Any others? Do we have a motion for Items 1 and 2? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Number 1 and 2.
Is a motion a second? Those are the minutes and the Park and, no, and the Post Crescent as the official city newspaper. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 60.
Items 3 and 5 are conflicting, so you could do, you could approve one of them or the other. You could send them both to another committee, potentially the Administration Committee to hash out exactly how that's going to work, or if you have another idea, you could move forward on that. Does anyone wish to make a motion for one of those two items or to do something with one of those two items? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion to send both these items back to the Administration Committee.
Second.
There's a motion a second. Is there any, there's no discussion on that, correct? Sending to committee? Does anyone want to discuss? Alderman Collier?
Yes. Fire and rescue team, like, was created four or five years ago. I think, I don't understand why you'd raise the boat fee. You're not going to charge the bicycle people a dollar to ride on the pass. You shouldn't charge the fishermen to fish.
So Alderman Collier, this is just to send it to committee? It's not about the items itself? If you want to argue- If you want to argue that it should be taken up tonight rather than going to committee? You'll have a chance when it comes back to make those arguments. Alderman, Nichols?
Is it appropriate to ask why they are conflicting?
Because one talks about the increased fees to be placed in the NINA Manasha Fire Rescue Budget to be determined by the mayor and the Common Council, appropriate staff to partially offset water rescue costs, and the other one is to deposit them in a trust fund account to be administered by the City of NINA.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion? Alderman, Benner?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that there's one other item too that goes with that, that I just thought it was more appropriate to send it back so we could have dialogue on it and make any adjustments at that point, rather than hash it out here and make amendments and spend a bunch of time trying to figure it out here rather than probably do it in a more appropriate place than this. So, that was my mindset behind that.
So, could we have a roll call vote on sending these two items to the Administration Committee, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item four is a special use permit for 222 Washington Street. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Alderman, Taylor?
Mayor, before I make a motion, I just was wondering if item B, verification of ingress egress easements, has there been a document on that?
I was going to call you Alderman Engelbert, but that doesn't work. Mr. Engelbert?
Yeah, it is in the warranty deed that they supplied to us. It should be in your packet.
Is it appropriate to actually discuss this at this point, or should we just have a motion and then discuss it?
If you, if there's questions before we make a motion, I would allow that.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, we talked about a few things when you had sent this to me, and, and we talked about some backfill concerns that I had against the masonry. I also talked about the lighting photometrics as far as light trespass, and I also talked about interior content as far as being appropriate as far as fire protection. Could you comment on those three items in all, on your findings?
Sure. After talking with the building inspector, it appears that there is a way for the applicants to remove the windows on the east side of the facade and still address some of the moisture concerns. It may be cost prohibitive, but really that's something that gets addressed during the building permit process. Likewise, with the interior part of the structure. I did talk to the fire department, and they did not see any major obstacles with fireproofing the interior of the building for the purpose of sort, of storage units. Considering this is a pretty small facility, it wasn't a big concern of theirs.
Does there any talk about what the contents may be, and if it's, because the building structure, I think, is type one building construction, I think if it were built today, so it's all masonry, but are there sprinklers in there at this point right now, or?
I am not sure.
Okay. And what about the photometrics on the lighting?
Well, as far as the lighting goes, the proposal includes the installation of two security wall lights, one each by the loading docks. Both of the fixtures are fully cut off. I did not get point-by-point photometrics, but the cut sheets for the lights state that they have a range of about 30 feet. It's hard to say that could meet our standards, but without walking the property when they're actually installed, and without any photometrics, it's, it's hard to tell.
Okay. And also, you sent a memo that said that if we don't approve the special use, then they're not allowed to store, to use it as storage, is that correct?
Correct. The way our code writes, if the special use permit is denied tonight, the applicant would have one of two options. One, they could bring the property fully up to code in terms of our zoning requirements. That would include taking a portion of 10 feet and excavating it from the rear to maintain a rear yard setback. It would also include the removal of a driveway on the south side and in place, put a transitional vegetation area, as well as some other landscaping improvements that we would now require. In lieu of doing all of those things, they could go to the Board of Appeals for variances from one or all of the zoning requirements that are on this property.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Taylor?
I had some, prepared some pictures here. Can we bring those up on the slide?
I closed everything down because you said you didn't need them.
Well, I said I would.
We can get them back up, it's just going to take a little while to do so, correct?
I said I would condense it since I lost the opportunity before the meeting.
Okay.
I can get it down, you all have to get it up though.
Mike might be able to handle it.
You are a teacher too, Mike, you might be able to do that.
I could start by saying the property of 222 Washington Street, to refresh people's memory, was the physician's clinic known as the Jensen Clinic, and that was started in, I believe, And this certainly is on our major gateway into the city. We have two churches as you enter the city of Manasha, and then we have some other properties that have fallen into disrepair in this corridor. We put a lot of tens of millions of dollars in our downtown, but we don't seem to manage our entry corridors, and I think this is a very important corridor for us to address, especially as this 222 Washington Street parcel is on our agenda tonight. I think the, the east facade facing Washington Street, I think, should be maintained in a professional, professional office building appearance. If they want to do storage in there, that's fine, but I think boarding up the windows with wood is not something that I think we should have in our, in our gateway corridor. I think there's an opportunity here, and I'll show on the slides where there can be windows put back in. You can have security windows, you can have security sensors for any type of entry or breakage, and you can have windows that are, security windows that would not break. And they're certainly high enough up where you wouldn't have to worry about someone trying to enter the building through them. I think it's imperative that the appearance of this front of this facade is maintained in a professional-looking manner, not just a boarded-up storefront or office front. They do have the opportunities on the other three sides of the building to match the existing siding that is on the building. Apparently, the north side of the building is going to have some sort of, and what do I do here? And Debbie, maybe you could do this, and I'll just tell you what you and I'm looking for. I had a different presentation with this, and I apologized for not having it all in order. Looking for the Washington Street quarter, the front of the 222 building. This is the trail section behind the NINA Manasha sewage plant. Up there, we can, okay, can we back up to the picture before that? Okay, this is the current house next to the building, uh, next to the clinic, and they say they want to remove this house so they can have this as the entryway to the, and correct me, Mayor, if I'm wrong, the north side of the building would be a loading dock, is that correct? So, when we remove this home, which city codes should have been on this forever because of the disrepair, it's in, if we go to the next slide, this would be the loading dock for the building in the background, and if we go to the next slide, when you remove that house, this is what you're going to be looking at there. So, I don't know what's worse, the house or the, or what we're going to be looking at in the future. So, if we could back up to the picture before, I think what needs to be done is if they do put this loading dock, there needs to be some sort of barrier coming out from the building, landscaping burned, and I'll talk about that as we get into the, the east location on the building. Now, if you can advance a couple, we'll see what we have. That's, that's a building across the street. The city had the opportunity to buy this a few years ago, and the council chose not to, and I wasn't on the council at the time, but I think it's something we need to address, but let's look back across the street. And that's all, insert lots of violations that we need to help clean that up too. I'll keep going. Apparently, they want to erase the grid here that would cover these windows here on the lower, on the lower floor of the building, and that, there needs to be some sort of a screen coming out this way that would prevent us from looking at the industrial area behind this. And I really believe that, I shouldn't talk.
That's what I was trying to.
Just let me say, I'm going to talk about these upper windows here. This is so that people at home can hear me. The upper windows, I think, should be maintained instead of just boarded up, shuttered up. That's not the effect I don't think the city wants. Those few windows on the east side should be maintained in a proper manner that the building looks like it's a functioning office building and not a warehouse. And then also, I don't know what the Plan Commission or Community Development would have, what they would suggest for this buffer where the house is and where the loading dock's going to be, and then that other industrial area there. So, I think we need to go back to Plan Commission and look at both property, both properties in a more of a comprehensive development and how it's going to, the final product property is going to look. You know, if they want to bring that landscaping around and cover those bottom, those bottom windows, that's, that's, that's fine to me, but we still keep the integrity of the building, and it doesn't look like a shuttered up, boarded-up building. That's something we don't need. So, I don't think we've addressed the issue with the parking and with the house, the house being taken down, and I would like those issues to be addressed, and it's very difficult to make amendments or do that here tonight, so I think more appropriately it'd be sent back to Plan Commission to see how we can accomplish that, or to Administration, Mayor, if that's where you want it sent back to.
I don't think it'd be appropriate to the Administration Committee. Just so you know, the property to the north, that house, is not owned by the same people as the office building, so you cannot place restrictions on that property as part of the special use requirement.
Didn't, didn't I read and hear that they were purchasing that property?
No.
Or that the house was going to be, they were going to remove the house?
They were planning on taking down the house, but that is not, they're not the same owners.
Well, how would you get a loading dock then into the north side of this building?
I, I understand what you're saying. We went through the same whole discussion at the Plan Commission, so you can't.
Well, help me better understand that.
You can't tie what happens on the neighboring property to the special use permit for this. You would be allowed to do the other things that you're talking about, the windows. The code says that newer replacement materials shall be of the same type as used in the original construction, so you could say a window is not the same type of material as cedar siding, or a glass storefront isn't the same as a steel half-glass door, so you could make those types of restrictions, saying that they need to be the same as what was originally there in that case, if you wanted to do that. So, if you wanted to, you could, the best way probably would be to, to hold this on the council agenda, well, to table this, and then for you to have a motion ready, and we could work with you to create that motion, and then do it at the next council meeting. So, you would have something ready to.
Okay. But help me understand how the loading dock would be on the north side of the 222.
You're correct, it doesn't work without the house going away as well.
Okay.
But because they're two separate owners and two separate parcels, you can't tie them together.
Okay.
And we can't, we can't tell them that they cannot demolish that building, they could get a demolition permit for that building.
So, the people at 222, are they going to be buying the property at 218?
No.
They're not?
No, they're just working with them to do that.
And then how are they going to, between 218, the home, and the 222, how are they going to make that connection with a loading dock?
It, it wasn't a loading dock, I do not believe, it was a door of some sort. The owner is here if he wishes to speak, I don't know if you do wish to speak or not, but.
Do you have unanimous consent?
Do we have unanimous consent from the council to hear from the owner?
I'll go for unanimous consent.
If you could just use the microphone, please.
Did you get a copy of this?
There you go.
Oh, yeah. It's in here, it's got to find it here.
Okay, do you see the picture? On the north side? There's a retaining wall like you were discussing there, you see that coming off the corner? And, and then on the west, northwest side, there's another little retaining wall going there, and there's just going to be a parking area to pull up and unload, and this driveway's going to go all the way around the building. So, we're working in conjunction with the neighboring property?
Well, certainly the retaining wall that you have on here wouldn't be enough to, you can see where the existing house is way to the, to the north of that wall.
But do you see the loading zone?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to have back and forth conversation here, Mayor, with, I think what you had said before, we can send this back to, we can hold it.
So, why don't we table it?
Table it.
If that's what you'd like to do, and you could come back with a motion.
Okay. Uh, I'll make that motion, then, Mayor.
So, you'd like to make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Is there a second? A motion and a second? I always forget if there's discussion or not? No? Yes? No? Okay. Could we have a roll call vote then, please?
Well, she carried on roll call five one.
I got you. Yeah, did.
You're, you're under a different name.
You're under Marshall. You're under Marshall.
Okay. You sat at a different spot.
Can we turn this off now? Can I turn it off now?
Yeah, that's done. That item's done.
Yeah.
We can just shut the little-
Oh, you can just shut the-
I somehow mixed my agenda in with all my other stuff, so we're going to share. Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for May 19th through June 2nd. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of May 19th, 2016, to June 2nd, 2016, in the amount of $1,878,815.45.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols, did you have a?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remove check number 54096, and that's in the amount of $75 made out to Jeff Nichols.
Found it. So, there's a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable and payroll excluding check number 54096. Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six zero.
And then we have the separated check. This is a check for Jeff Nichols, who serves on the board of review. And we can understand why, no, Alderman Nichols doesn't want to vote on that. So, uh, we don't even need a motion. We just separated the two, so if we could, if there's no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote? You don't need to leave, Becky.
Well, she carried on roll call five zero with Alderman Nichols abstaining.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 2017. Do we have a motion for those recommended for approval at this point? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage, the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved on the police department's memo dated May 12th, 2016.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six zero.
And then we have the separated check. This is a check for, um, Jeff Nichols, who serves on the board of review. And we can understand why, no, Alderman Nichols doesn't want to vote on that. So, uh, we don't even need a motion. We just separated the two, so if we could, if there's no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote? You don't need to leave, Becky.
Well, she carried on roll call five zero with Alderman Nichols abstaining.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 2017. Do we have a motion for those recommended for approval at this point? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage, the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved on the police department's memo dated May 12th, 2016.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six zero.
We have one license that's not recommended for approval, and Mr. Riker is here this evening. Is there any objection to hearing from Mr. Riker at this time? If not, now is your chance. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I guess I just want to make a couple points. Um, where do I begin? I've been, uh, since the felony, which was 25 years ago, and I'm not minimizing it at all, but all you can do since that point is do something else with your life, and the, what I chose to do was work in the, um, bar business. I've worked in the bar business for 25 years. I have zero drunk drivings. I've never had any alcohol-related charges whatsoever on my record. I've never sold to a minor. I've held a bartending license in the town of Grand Shoot for 15 years without incident. Um, I, my record, other than that, is, I mean, I think it stands with anybody's other than the felony from 25 years ago, and it wasn't, the felony didn't happen in a bar. It wasn't alcohol-related. Um, I wasn't under the influence of alcohol when it happened. Um, my wife and I are residents in the Winnebago County, in Winnebago County. We live in Nina. Uh, we're leasing the six, the address is Six Taco Street, the bar formerly known as Margaritaville. We are leasing that bar, and it would be paramount if one of the primary leases could have a responsible, you know, license to operate out of this establishment. Um, I'm happily married, father of four. Uh, you know, I'm trying to make a living, and that's my career, and, I mean, I understand that the felony is nothing to, you know, minimize, like I said, but I think if you look at my record overall, I, like I said, I bartended in Grand Shoot for, for over 20 years, held a bartending license for 15 years, never had any, any, I mean, I think it's, um, my record is, is pretty good, other than that. There really isn't anything else to say, I don't think, other than, um, you know, I'd like for maybe to have an exception, or at least maybe a probationary period, or something where I could obtain one, or, I don't think anybody, I've never had any issues with, with alcohol at all in my life. So, it's, uh, it's, like I said, it's the career that I've chose, and I will be part of the Manasha business community, whether you grant me one or not, because my wife has already probably granted hers tonight, so, um-
So, what the process here is, we would allow any questions for you, and then we would make a motion to either approve or deny at that point.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Taylor, did you have a question?
Uh, did you say that you're going to, you're going to own this property?
We're, we're releasing it from the, the former owners.
Okay.
I forget what the man's last name is. His first name is Luis. I'm sure you people know him here.
Sure.
Um, I know the bar has had a bad reputation. I have, I have a lot of friends that are in law enforcement in the Nina. I trained with some Nina cops and some Oshkosh police officers, and when I went in to get this facility, they did some checking, and they were like, whoa, that place has got a bad reputation, and then this and that, and, well, I'm, I've already put thousands of dollars into the renovation of the inside of the property. We're trying to better the, the property, and, uh, you know, I'd love to work with the city to do that, but we're going to make it into a kind of a higher class, and I don't want to use that word too, too much, but it's going to be a martini bar. And then it's going to be, you know, top shelf stuff. It's not going to be the kind of crowd that was in there before. And, uh, you know, like I said, I'm trying to, you know, help the city have a really nice establishment there, so that's what I'm hoping for.
Uh, the name choice, the Hammerheads of Manasha, uh, what does that mean?
I'm a sports fisherman. I'm originally from Key West, Florida, and I have a lot of giant mounts that my wife won't allow me to put up in our house. So, they are going into this bar, and I have a giant, uh, hammerhead that's about 11 feet long, that's going to be the focal point from behind the bar. So, it's going to be called Hammerheads Martini Bar of Manashia, so.
Alderman Collier?
I wish you luck. I, uh, as far as the past, I understand, I got a checkered one myself. I, uh, hope you can convince these people that you're trying to clean up the bar. A martini bar, that might be a stretch, but I wish you luck, but, uh, I think you deserve a second chance, and I hope they consider that, that all people change.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Did you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to give him his license.
So, there's a motion and a second to rec, to, um, recommend approval, to grant approval of the license? Is there any further discussion? Alderman Bennett, I'm sorry. Your light is very hard to see against the sunshine always.
Uh, my question is for the police department. With your, um, background check, did you see, did you guys, are you aware that they had any, anything else on Mr. Riker at all, or is it as clean as, as he's stating it is? I have no reason to doubt him, but trust and verify environment.
Yeah, we did, uh, we found that 94 delivery of substance was on his record, and then he indicated there was a possession charge in 98, and nothing else that was showing on his criminal record.
Okay.
I was a dumb college student at the time. It was a long time ago. Wish I could go back.
I never heard of such a thing.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, we're speaking about our gateway quarter, corridors, and this is certainly one after crossing the bridge. Uh, today, when I was looking at some properties there, I noticed the front doors are in very bad shape, uh, as far as paint peeling, and there's some other issues, maybe up where the signage is. I certainly hope, it sounds like, uh, you want to bring things up, and, uh-
I actually have new doors for it, just waiting. I was going to kind of wait to see what happened here, and, yeah, I was going to talk to the owner to see if I could, like I said, I have everything in place. Uh, he was talking about putting in a, a bay window there, and I don't know how that sell his dealings with you guys. I haven't, so, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm looking to, you know, make it a, kind of like, if you're familiar with Nina, um, Greenie's Porthouse, that's basically the design I'm looking for, the big open window, and there'll be tables in there, and, and it'll be, it'll be a really nice place. If you ever have a chance and want to meet me down there, I can show you the inside. It's all been, redid everything in there, repainted the whole place, redid the floors, redid the bar. It's going to be all new lighting, and, and, yeah, I have concerns, too, with, you know, the back of the bar is even really worse than the front as far as how dark it is back there, and it's, you know, it is, it, it's, it needs some work, but, I mean, it's, that's what I've done for 25 years of my life, and I, I know I can do it, and with your support, uh, I'm sure I could make it a, a really nice place.
And, uh, through their community development department, Kevin can help you with, uh, palette of colors, the signage. There's different, uh, city ordinances that you have to meet for that, too, so, so you're aware of that ahead of time.
I spoke to Brenda, who owns, uh, I think she's part owner of the R and R, and she told me, don't do anything until you talk to the city council. They'll make you redo it, so, I'm heeding her advice.
Appreciate any improvements you can make to that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Saying no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
No, wait a minute.
Do you want to start over?
To approve, to deny, or?
It was to approve.
To approve.
Motion was to approve. Yes. Correct.
Did you vote the correct way? Okay. I meant the way you had wanted to vote, I should say.
Motion carried on roll call six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming tonight. Item four is the outdoor alcohol beverage permit applic, did I miss one? Oh, item three. We're going to skip all those, huh? Liquor license applications for 2016 through 17. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Would it be appropriate to approve these all in one motion as listed on the memo? Great, thank you.
Plus, you want to do them all individually?
No, thanks. I will move to approve the liquor license applications for the 2016 through 2017 licensing year as listed in the memo provided by Clerk Galiasey, um, dated June 2nd, 2016.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could, whoops, Alderman Zalinski?
I was just curious, it's probably not the right time to discuss this, but what Sandy said earlier about the problems with parking issues and outside issues, are we pursuing that at all? Because I, because I live right down on Paris Street, so every time I go past there, I see cars parked there from literally 5:00 all the way up till 9:00 a.m. the next morning, and I don't know how that's not re, regulated when there's also police officers driving down there constantly, and it, it really is a nuisance at some point because there's always people outside smoking, and I notice that every time, and I could see how that's incredible nuisance to the neighbors, and it upsets me just to see it driving, walking past, driving past, whatever. So, I just want to know if there's any insight on that from the police department that, what's going on with that.
I guess, did you want to comment on whether those are, um, issues that could be used to deny a license?
If there were, and I don't, i, is it one of these properties that are on here?
The 5:00 somewhere, and the old grog, that's where the issues are.
And if there were a, um, demonstrated history of citations-
Of what nuisance? Oh, a citation.
That have been issued, a pers, um, the people were found guilty of citations, um, uh, noise, I mean, there is the, a noise-
Have there been noise?
Ordinance, and so if someone was issued a noise, uh, a citation for noise, and there were convictions or something, that could be something. Our, is, my recollection is that our ordinance sets forth some parameters for, like, a point system. That is not one of the citations that is listed on there for acquiring points, but it certainly could be added. You can amend the ordinance and include that, and then that could be considered.
Because I would like to get some food cherry, because I know, know people that have moved away from that neighborhood because of noise, the noise from those bars and the parking issues and stuff like that, so.
And as far as smoking is concerned, there's nothing, there's a-
The noise.
Specifically a statute that, you know, if there's something with regard to smoking, that cannot be used against somebody-
No, I'm not. I'm just saying the loudness, that's why the people are outside smoking and they're talking, and so on and so forth, so.
Alderman Collier?
Uh, I understand what you're saying, but both those bars have been there at least since 1982.
Eighty-two? 1882?
Nineteen eighty-two.
Okay.
Long time. Well, I started-
I was going to say-
Bartending and working at some of them.
Closer to 1882.
Well, I've been going there since 82 then. Um, granted, the noise is loud. When you open the door outside, you're going to hear it across the street. Granted, you're going to hear cars coming and going. As far as the car parked there, 5:00 in the morning till 7:00, only every two hours, you only got to move it one, one section up, and they're legal again. Um, is it policed? I think it's policed enough. Uh, the noise ordinance, like I say, when they open the door, you're going to hear everything, and when people go outside smoking, you're going to hear them. The, I mean, it's two businesses that pay taxes like everybody else, and, uh, it sounds like, you know, a little bit of crying on the other side, I'm sorry to say, and no disrespect, but, uh, let the people make their money in Manashia and the businesses so they can pay taxes and keep everybody else happy.
Any further discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six zero.
Item four is the outdoor alcohol beverage permit applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the outdoor alcohol beverage permit applications for the 2016 through 2017 licensing year as listed on the memo provided by Clerk Galiasey dated June 2nd, 2016.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any further dis, any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six zero.
Item five is a Class B liquor license application for Patrick Lee Dufresne at 184-190 Main Street. Is there a motion? No? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the Class B liquor license application for Patrick Lee Dufresne, 184 through 190 Main Street, Manasha for the 2016 through 2017 licensing year.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Item one is, is resolution R 1716 approving a 2016 budget adjustment for the purchase of acquiring a vacant lot at 100 Fox Street. This does require a six-person majority for passage this evening. Alderman Taylor.
Little comment on this before any motion is made. Reading the minutes from the park board and from the Nina Minasha Sewage Commission. First of all, you know that I'm not in favor of Loop the Lake because the way it was brought to this body. It's a non-budgetary item. Started out at $300,000. I don't have the numbers on the, we refurbished the restroom at Shepherd Park with the labor, I don't have those numbers. But this project just keeps climbing. Now, it's another $25,000. There was poor engineering done with the original plan. Instead of bringing a comprehensive plan to this body and us looking at it as a whole package. We've gone at it as a pay-as-you-go project. I love trails. I think it's a, when it's done right, it's, it's a good thing. There's some other opportunities that might change this, and we could bring the people into the downtown Minasha rather than bypass Minasha on this leg of the project. With the graphic packaging property, parking lot area might be a possibility with them leaving that we could own that waterfront trail connected to the Gilbert site. Use Garfield Avenue as the corridor to bring the people to Loop the Lake through our waterfront community and into the downtown and then back to the trestle. In the minutes, it was reported by the, in the sewage commission, Nina Minasha Sewage Commission meeting minutes, it was reported that, I would like, let me see. It's reported why we would want to put the trail behind the sewage plant. And I, I don't think that they've got the message as a department of the city and commissioners that Minasha has a video that we produced in that we're supposed to be a waterfront community. And it was stated in the minutes that what would be the attraction to have, to have the trail on the backside, on the water side of the sewage plant. And of course, that would be the waterfront. By not having, well, first of all, Loop the Lake Trail is the name of the, the trail system that they want to install. But we're running this through a neighborhood that doesn't want it. And in the minutes here, it states that the street right away, at Matheson Street, should be used. And I think it would be Loop the Lake on street bicycle and pedestrian trail or route. And by going through that section of the neighborhood, we expose the cyclists, the pedestrians, the walkers to over 71 potential conflicts or accidents from driveways, intersections. And I think as leaders, we need to try to minimize that on a trail system. If we go along the waterfront, work with We Energies, work with the commission. And we would only impact four houses on the Minasha side of this trail. And we would showcase our waterfront. Is that projector still on?
We're getting a little off topic here, though. We're talking about purchasing a lot, not the entire trail here at this point.
What I, what I want to show here is something I don't think that was looked at. And what was talked about in the park and rec minutes here. And the sewage commission meetings minutes. You could go back to the. In the minutes, yeah, that one there, in the minutes, it was stated that it would cost $62,000 to have fixtures put up on this section of the trail. We have four telephone poles that are out the length of this property. The spacing is what we have on the city streets. So we'd have four streetlights put up on the existing poles that light that corridor instead of $62,000. In the minutes, it says that there isn't enough land. There's 16 feet of property here, the trail is 10 feet wide. Instead of putting in a $67,000 trail, we could put screenings in there at this point and for a fraction of the cost. So this is a possibility to, to help the neighborhood instead of buying another piece of property in the neighborhood. And then we would eliminate all the conflicts with the cyclists and, and vehicles. Make it a much safer location. Also, at some point, there might be fishing piers put out there or something. If you could advance to the, somebody had said, what are we, you know, in the minutes, why would we want this down here? If you could just advance again. This, this is what we're after, we're a waterfront community, this is what we're trying to showcase. I think there's another photo here. And what a beautiful westerly waterfront sunset trail we would have. Looking at the property.
Okay, I'm gonna rule that this is not what the agenda item is.
But I pointed out to where the property is here.
Okay, well, the agenda item is the offer to purchase on 100 Fox, if you'd like.
Right, and I want to show, and I want to show, just if you advance, just if, give me, two more sentences, Mayor.
Okay.
Go again, Debbie. Go again. Click on that. As you come around that corner, instead of going down to Matheson Street, Buttermore Street is four houses from the end of that trail system. So all you would impact would be was four houses. And if you click again, Debbie. The access point on Buttermore Street, you wouldn't have to buy any more property. You wouldn't have to buy this house. You wouldn't have the obstacle of the sewage plant outflow. We wouldn't have to spend probably $4,000 on cutting down the trees on that property on 100 Fox Street. You could click again, Debbie. Which is the same shoreline, you know, about eight houses down. Instead of eight houses down, it'd be down this, at this crossing at this point here. And we don't have to buy any property whatsoever. Instead of spending another $25,000 plus all the landscaping and everything we have to do at that point.
This crossing, if I remember right, is almost twice as long as the crossing at Fox Street?
Can't, can't be that far, I looked at it today.
Director Tongate, do you remember what the length is? We, we did look at this crossing. Was it?
This is a cross from Shepherd Park on Buttermore Street.
If we looked at all three crossings.
A short area.
I want to say that was in the thousand-plus feet range.
And the current proposal is what?
Six ninety-five, a little shy of 700.
So, 300 feet more. And it just keeps adding up, adding up more and more as we advance this project. And it kind of reminds me of the steam plant. We just keep throwing money at something and we don't quite get there. I would like to know, before we advance any more money on this project, Director Tongate, what has your conversation been with Canadian Central?
I think Mark has an update on that. We've been in contact with Canadian National regarding terms of an agreement for providing a crossing on the north landing of, of the proposed bridge. And they have submitted to us a draft agreement. And city attorney captain has reviewed that agreement to some extent and had some additional questions on it that we sent back to Canadian National and actually got a response from her about 20 minutes ago indicating that she thought that the agreement was very similar to the agreement that the city of Nina signed. So, you know, obviously, we can't respond to her response until the city attorney has another chance to look at the agreement. But Canadian National has indicated they would provide the crossing for this purpose without sacrificing, you know, the closing of another crossing. They've agreed to the modified switchback proposal that we have proposed for that location. And now it's just a matter of coming to terms with the proposed agreement that they have put before us.
Okay. And according to the minutes, we spent other discussions with Future Nina. And is there any minutes on that, what those conversations were? It was stating, Mayor, that they might be able to sell some rights to this site at 100 Fox Street, some naming rights or.
Well, Future Nina is looking for opportunities to fundraise throughout the trail, throughout that trail segment. And there could potentially be some furnishings, some portions of the trails that would be granted naming rights in recognition of the donations that people were looking at providing.
There's no minutes kept from these meetings with our staff?
I would, I was not at those meetings, and those are not official city meetings, so no, I don't believe there's meetings.
There should be, and we're talking dollars, it should be some, some sort of minutes.
We, no, we did not have minutes, or we did not come to an agreement as to what those opportunities would be yet, from my understanding. Did we? There, there weren't any final numbers.
The extent of what I know is Future Nina, like Don mentioned, is looking for opportunities at each of the four landings for corporate sponsorships, benches, some of other improvements of that nature. They are fundraising close to a million dollars, I think they're almost there for this project. You know, as far as the comprehensive budget for this project goes, it's probably something Brian could talk to you more specifically. But this item is an offer to purchase for 100 Fox Street. It's something that we brought to the plan commission, the park board, the council has seen this. Council voted unanimously to allow staff to negotiate up to $30,000 to buy this lot. We've come back with a deal for $25,000. We know the bridge needs to be moved either to the east or west side, that going over that sewage outfall structure is not a viable option. And so the item at hand is this offer to purchase for 100 Fox Street.
Very well said, young man. But we're violating all sorts of budget things here. And that's where I've had a problem with this whole situation since the start. Instead of coming together, looking at the, the whole process, I see that there's, I looked at the property today. There's two of the biggest cottonwood trees you've ever seen on 100 Fox Street. One is, I thought in that storm this afternoon, it probably fell down, it's hollowed out. Those trees, I'm sure, are gonna cost us at least $2,000, $3,000 per tree to have taken down, as I see on the map. It does say that the trees have to be removed, so, okay, we got $25,000, now it's other probably $4,000, $5,000 to remove trees. I see the landscaping, I see different park equipment that's going in there. So, I mean, we're really short-sighted here. And this pay-as-you-go process just doesn't fly with me, I'm sorry. We got a responsibility to the taxpayer, and this is how we got in serious trouble with the steam plant and the pay-as-you-go process shouldn't fly in Minasha. And the opinions that were stated in the park minutes and in the sewage commission, those opinions stated in the minutes have little or no merit to this process. They don't hold water whatsoever. And that type of practice for our city to be on solid footing that we don't have is where you find yourself getting into trouble. And this whole process is trouble at this point. And we need to correct it. We own the property along the lake, we are a community that wants to showcase our waterfront, let's do it. And these figures that are tens of thousands of dollars that we don't even have to spend just so we make the process and the project not stand on its own is ridiculous. And if we get back to some common sense and, and look at this project, one thing we haven't done is taken the needs of the people. It's the social economics of this neighborhood that we are trampling on, trampling on. If this was the rich man's neighborhood, we would have walked away from it.
Could, can I make a comment before, and then we probably should get a motion here, one or the other, one way or the other. First of all, to compare this to the power plant and the steam plant is pretty ludicrous. I mean, we're talking, we're not talking millions of dollars here. Secondly, we do not own the lakefront. The sewage commission is an entirely separate entity that owns that waterfront property. Third, the neighbor who is most affected, Mr. Goss, is in favor of this proposal. Fourth, fundraising would cover everything except for the land purchase. The landscaping, any site amenities would be covered within the fundraising and the original budget for the trail. I think most importantly, though, this does not preclude extending that, that untrailed along the lakefront in the future. But there's a ton of extra costs, we're looking at 150,000. If we're talking about, we don't have the money to do something, to move it and make it cost even more, at this point, does not seem to be the prudent thing to do when we could do that at any point if we decide that is the best, best thing in the future. So I would urge approval of this this evening, and let's keep this project moving. It's very popular in the community. It's something that people really want, and it's going to be a great feature for our community. Alderman Collier, sorry to...
Hey, Mayor, you need to shut the screen off.
Oh, you don't like that reflection on these glasses?
Shut it off. Good enough.
Yeah. Kill it. I'm blind. I can't see my corner no more. All I see is stars. All I see is stars.
Go ahead.
I'm glad that the railroad is coming across or something. If it's that good, it's super. The only question I had, and I'll bring up, is we bring the bridges. It'll either be an A or B spot. There is, I think, if you go to the farther spot out, there'll be nine boats affected. And if you stay at Fox Street, there's people with six boats, boats, boats. Are they going to be able to get underneath the Trussell Bridge?
I had a conversation with the engineer this afternoon on that, and he said that they will be designed for navigability. DNR will mandate that, so the answer is yes.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought that, anybody who wants to jump in and answer this, go ahead. But I thought that with the grant application that we had to have a plan as far as what we were going to do. I've seen that with grants, we can typically deviate that much as far as like the location of that bridge. Is that accurate thought?
I think it has more to do with, we came up with the... We had to have a plan in mind and come up with a budget for the grant. And so that, that plan that we came up with was Fox Street, was the seven-hundred-foot bridge. All the things we've been talking about, that was contemplated in the grant. Would they care if you moved it over, you know, a street? You know, perhaps not, but I think there would be a significant budget impact.
I think so, too, because the cost per foot on a bridge, and they add another three hundred feet to that bridge, I think would be pretty substantial. Probably even more money than buying this property, I would think. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't really seem to be financially prudent to do something different. And then, and as the mayor pointed out, this doesn't say that we can't sometime route that, route the trail around the lake if everybody agreed that that was a thing to do. And I appreciate staff getting that done, you know, per my, per my motion. And I was approved by council to get that done in the timeframe. And I think your information is good. And so I don't think that there's anything we say wouldn't happen. The other question I would have is that if this was postponed tonight, would it, how would that affect the purchase, the availability to purchase? Because we are missing two members of our council. And I'm not sure if...
Require six for the budget adjustment to be approved.
And if I were to make a motion to postpone, I'm asking attorney. My strongest reason is that we're missing two members of our council. Would that be inappropriate?
Attorney Captain, sorry.
It's just a motion to postpone. You don't need any...
Particular reason?
Particular reason, correct.
Okay, thank you. Back to you. Do you think it would affect our agreement at this time?
I don't think it would affect the sale necessarily, working with the property owners. I mean, they probably don't want to wait another two weeks. But if that's, you know, the direction the council goes, then I think they would be okay with it.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
There's a motion and a second? Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols has something as well. Alderman Taylor?
I'll yield.
Alderman Collier?
I hate to put anybody on the spot, but there's six people, and I think it's important to vote on this tonight and pass it and go on. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I think that's the right thing to do at this time, too, to postpone it for two weeks.
Any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
I just want to say that the exaggerated costs, Mayor, are exaggerated. You're splitting here is when you see, well, the city might not own it, but you appoint the commissions. And it's a fine line. Both the cities of Manasha and Neena have this facility. And if we want to split here, it's about the ownership and how it is. It's just that we have an opportunity to make this right. And we keep exaggerating costs. We keep exaggerating other things throughout the minutes of the park commission and the sewage commission. For instance, there's no lighting on the trail and...
Like I said, this is actually, I'm postponing it. But if you'd like to add that to the CAP, to add it around the lake, we can put that in there.
It's not the magnitude, but it's, the steam plant got going ahead of us with the pay-as-you-go type of thing. And we don't even have the numbers, what it costs to rebuild a pavilion, the labor cost, the cost from the park department yet, which they worked on it all winter. We don't even have those costs because those weren't even budgeted.
Alderman Zalinski, this is just on the motion to postpone?
Yeah, that's, I'd like to say Taylor hit the nail on the head with everything he's spoke about. And I'm just, we don't have any numbers on what it costs to put it on Buttermore Street. And I think he's going the right way about this because I would have voted no. And I think we're, if you're going to do something, you got to do it right the first time. We're not doing it right the first time.
Alderman Collier?
There's no guarantee. There'll be eight of us here at the next meeting. If you want to vote no, vote no. But let it be known that we're here as a council to vote on stuff. We have six. We should make our vote. And then if it's done, if we can't go on because we don't have six to nothing, then we know we got to go on. But if we can pass something tonight, we should at least try to vote on it.
So Alderman Benner?
Some more time. I guess as long as they go along with that motion to postpone, if we can come back with what the added cost would be to move that bridge or to add three hundred feet, and I would say just take a per foot cost of whatever that was to do that, kind of add it and show what it would cost to actually put that bridge in with that additional length, I think it'd be fair to come back with that. And I'd like to make that as amendment to my motion for staff to come back with what those dollar figures might be.
I don't know if we can actually attach the two, but we can come back with that. The other thing, though, is, is the engineering costs will likely double because the engineering is significantly finished at this point.
And it'd be just estimates. I wouldn't think it'd be anything that we'd be, you know, investing a lot of time in because then if anybody does have questions about what that may be, they have a comparable that they can, that they can look at and still make a responsible vote based off of that instead of what ifs or hypotheticals or something like that. So I think that'd just be a fair thing to do. So I appreciate city staff to do that. Thank you.
Could we have a roll call vote, please? To postpone, yes. It's three, three?
The motion, unless you want to vote.
The motion fails then.
Motion fails on roll call. Three, three. Because it fails.
After you said that, I thought about what I was doing, but... Can I, I can't change my vote now, Pam, can I?
Well, you have the right to, what was that? You have the right to vote because you can make the tie that fails.
I would like to break the tie, though, and vote for it, please. I'm sorry, I was thinking the opposite way. This is how it gets confusing when you're doing things. I do think it's important for all the council to be here to vote on this. I didn't technically press the button.
He didn't.
We're good. The mayor has the ability to vote. And Debbie asked me if I'd like to vote tonight. I was confused at the moment. Yes.
But you stated that it failed, the motion failed. And we've asked the mayor to vote and pass, and the mayor doesn't have to vote. And you want to stand behind the fact that you said...
Do you want me to vote or not?
That you said the motion fails. And you guys live with that, but then we ask you to vote, and then you don't want to vote. So you can't have it both ways.
If you'd like to have a motion, to make a motion to override that ruling, you're welcome to do that, Alderman Taylor. Seeing that you didn't, we'll move on. Item two is Resolution eighteen. It's a resolution encouraging graphic packaging to pursue sales, a sale of an operating plant. Is there a motion? You need to turn your light on. Oh, Alderman Zalinski is, I'm sorry.
I was, I thought we were going, could I make an amendment to, like, what Benner was saying?
No, we're done with, that one's done. But if you want that, if you want other information, I can get you more information for the next meeting.
Yeah, I've asked for information. I've emailed, and I still haven't gotten it, so...
Okay, just remind me after the meeting. We'll see what we can get for you. Okay, Alderman Collier? Oops. You turned your... He was on, and then it went over to Alderman Taylor, so...
There, now it's on. There, now you're on.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, for Resolution R-1816 in regards to graphics packaging international purchase, sale of operating the plant.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Collier, did you have discussion?
I'm very happy with what's written here.
I would like to remove my name from introducing this and add Alderman Ernie Collier's name to it. I was advised by council since I'm an active employee. And Alderman Collier has stated that he would introduce this.
Alderman Collier, are you agreeable to introducing it?
Yes.
Okay. So do we need an amendment for that, Pam, or not? To change who introduced it? Okay. So we will change the introduction to Alderman Collier. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call six, zero.
Item three is a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between the city of DePere and the city of Manasha regarding mutual assistance for environmental services. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-1916 approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of DePere and the city of Manasha regarding mutual aid assistance with the environmental services.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call six, zero.
Item M is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment this evening? Seeing no one, is there a motion to recess at this time? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, we stand at recess. Thank you.